There you go.
You got me?
Now I do.
Okay.
That's weird.
Okay, um, if I recall, Roger wasn't gonna be here tonight. He's out of town.
He's traveling.
He's traveling. Sure.
He left yesterday, I believe.
Okay, um. Let's call to order. Bill and I are here and Roger's been excused. And we have a guest. Chief Varga.
Good evening, chief.
Hi, Bill.
Are you here as chief or as a citizen?
Uh, I'll say I'm here as chief, but I'm just here at full.
All right, sounded like that. Here from the public. Okay, let me do our first selectmen's briefing. Okay, I'm gonna go through our open positions and hires. Our custodian slash maintenance union position, we hired Brendan Bentley. He started September twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four. Land use slash building clerk, that's a union position as well. And that we hired Bonnie Davis and she started work today. We're delighted to have her and we're replacing her desktop with a docking station and monitors so that she can use it with the existing laptop. That's about six hundred and ninety bucks, but definitely worth it. Senior Center Director and Agent for the Elderly ads have been placed with CCM Yukon Connecticut Hire, which is Department of Labor. And we're just awaiting some responses.
EMD. Could, could we have Chris send me copies of the, the ad?
Of the ads? Well, it's a little tricky because you have to go in online and you've got to enter the information in there.
Okay, I could, I could do that. Did, did we settle on, on what we want to advertise for the, the range of salary?
For which one?
For the senior center. There was some question, there was a question the last time because I believe we advertised for nineteen to twenty or something and we had been paying considerably higher than that before.
I don't think we were paying considerably high, we weren't paying higher than the twenty.
I believe the previous director was getting twenty-five or twenty-six dollars an hour.
Uh, sorry, I didn't, I didn't check that, but I, that was not my understanding.
We talked about it briefly the last.
I remember briefly, yeah. Let me.
It was one of the concerns that we had perhaps is one of the reasons why we didn't get many responses.
Right.
I think our temporary help was in the range that advertised, but of course that was, that was different.
Wow, I had asked that originally back when, but let me double check, okay? And if that's the case, we will correct this.
Okay.
EMD, no applicants. I talked with Mike Kaplan briefly, was talking with him last few days ago and I told him we're struggling on this end because we, we really do not have the resources at this time to update all the information we need to update. Okay, Public Works, the new pickup truck was delivered on September thirteenth. It's pretty and red. Ashford Senior Center. Our plan is to replace the carpet and cove base and strip slash recoat the floors in time for Ashford's five-town November ninth Veterans Day event. I obtained additional estimates to install high-traffic weatherproofed carpeting in the foyer and to address broken and lifted linoleum edges at the entrance to the kitchen using cove-based material. Both of these are, both of these aside from the fact that they're, it's to protect the carpet. Also, we have, in the past, we've put, what do you call them, area rugs over the, near the entrance to both from the outside and into the large room. And they're actually tripping hazards. So in addition, so is the broken and lifted linoleum that's at the edge of the kitchen. So I got revised estimates for that carpeting and the cove base. And the carpeting is three thousand seven hundred thirty-six and the cove base work is one thousand thirty-five dollars respect, for a total of four thousand seven hundred seventy-one. The amount we approved during our September third twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four Board of Selectment meeting was not to exceed thirty-five hundred based upon the original estimate for the carpeting and the nine hundred and twenty-two for the cove base. The, the business with the cove base is that at the entrance of the kitchen in where we have the lifted linoleum and we've got the broken linoleum right at the edges is to use the cove base to actually cut cove base and put that down. It matches well, it'll lay nice and flat, certainly as flat as needed. And so what I'd like to do, if I can, is have a revision to what we put forth and have this being an amount not to exceed four thousand eight hundred instead of three thousand five hundred.
Does that have to be added to the agenda?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion for reconsideration of estimates for re-carpeting of the senior center, including recove basing. To the agenda.
Thank you. And also, just as an aside, I worked out the dates with the installer and with the cleaning guy who works, you know, has to do his work at the same time. We laid out a plan to make sure we make the date for the November ninth Veterans Event. Okay, so let's see, you made that motion, all in favor?
Well, I made a motion to add it to the agenda.
Right, which is all in favor.
And I, I.
Yeah.
And then I'll make a motion to revise estimates for that.
There we be.
For not to exceed forty-eight hundred.
Yes. Very good.
And, and those funds, those funds be taken from and clarified with the Board of Finance, but in the interim, taken from contingency.
Actually, you only want to hit contingency once during a year.
Okay.
But it's just like, so what my recommendation is to overrun the senior center maintenance line and adjust using contingency at the end of the fiscal year during the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five audit. It's kind of the standard approach, so.
Yeah, I, that's why I said to consider taking it from, but that's fine, that's a friendly amendment.
Thank you.
Acceptable to me.
Thank you. Um, I second the motion, all in favor?
I.
I.
I, I'd just like to make a note on that, that, you know, that we're approaching our thirtieth anniversary there and, and it's been that many years since that carpeting has been actually replaced. We've done a number of cleaning efforts and everything else, but given the age of it, I appreciate the, the hard work that the seniors have done to maintain it that way, but it's time to replace it.
Oh, awesome, thank you. Total agreement. Okay, Veterans Day planning. We're working with Wellington Mansfield Eastford Union Participants. We should get some funds to cover the food, et cetera, for this event because we don't have any. Recommendation is to request five thousand dollars from the Board of Finance. What do you think, Bill? Well, actually, that would be a separate item on the agenda as well.
Yeah, it sounds like a lot of money, but we'll, we'll talk about it when we add it. Do you want to add it now to the agenda?
Yes, please.
I will make a motion to add consideration of funding for the Veterans Day celebrations on November ninth.
Yes. Yes. Um, I second that, all in favor?
I.
I. Thank you. Okay, heating oil, price has been locked.
Just to go back, now, now we need to vote on the dollar amount, but.
Okay.
Where did we, how did we arrive at five thousand dollars?
It was kind of rough cut. We, we anticipate there could be, I don't know, a hundred and thirty-five people. I know that the Wellington people are thinking there would be more. They, if I understand correctly, I forget who told me this, but they had less than a hundred people at their event.
I was there the last time, yeah, I, I would say between a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five. A number of the people participated outside but then left.
Yeah. Um. So we know we want to get finger, you know, finger food, sandwiches, those kinds of things. Rather than having people try and make them in the kitchen ahead of time, it's actually safer and easier to just purchase it from one of the caterers or one of, whether it's Big Y or whatever. And I want to make sure we have enough money to be able to do that. Chris, can you recall any other items that we feel we need to spend money on?
Need to buy paper goods.
Paper goods.
I think paper goods, food, beverages.
That's right, beverages. And. Yes, rather than trying to rely on people bringing in things and not kind of knowing where they came from.
Cookies, stuff like that.
Yeah, cookies, all of, all the food in particular and what goes with serving it. We may need, I don't know, but we might need some tablecloths, those kinds of things. Do you have a different amount in mind? I know we replaced, actually, we bought two flags because we didn't have them for Merchant Marines and we didn't have them for the Space Force.
Well, of course, we don't have to spend that much if we allot it, it just seems like an awful and, and I prefer to, to a lot more and spend less than, than not have enough, but it seems like an awful lot of money to me. I. I mean, if we had two hundred people there at five dollars apiece. How much is that?
How about this? How about if we bring it down to twenty-five hundred?
Let's go with that.
Okay. Um, want to make a motion?
I will make a motion. And where will we run that out of, those funds?
Well, actually, the thought was to ask the Board of Finance for the money just up front. Um, but do you have another thought about it? I don't know what.
Well, I, we've got a couple of things that we're going to be running the senior center. They're going to be hosting it, right?
No, they're not hosting it. The town is, the town is hosting it.
But it's at the senior center.
We're using their location. They will help us, okay? But it's a, it's not a senior center event per se, it's a town event.
It's going to be at the senior center.
Yes, it will.
Why don't we run it out of that budget and include that in our overages at the end of the year?
Works for me.
Line item in their budget.
They don't, yeah, they don't, I don't know that they really have a line item in their budget that it fits.
They don't have one for carpeting either.
Maintenance. It's either maintenance or repairs. We can apply that to.
Does the Board of Finance have a meeting before the?
Uh, they don't have, they do not have a meeting this week, so that means they're not going to have another meeting until probably two weeks.
But before the November ninth? I, I would just as a matter.
Good question. Yes, they will, but it'd be kind of late to get to them.
I, I, I would just let them know as a matter of courtesy what our intention is and see if they got a better idea. But run it out of your, your, yeah, I mean, you can run it by the treasurer, but run it out of your line item for the senior center and include that on our potential because we've got, if I remember, we've got a couple of overages with the senior center, don't we?
Yes.
Carpeting.
Yeah, yeah. So actually, if we were to, um, if I were to run it by Finance Department, by the treasurer, and ask her what's the appropriate line item for this to come out of. Um, would that work?
That sounds good to me.
Okay, so the motion would be?
To appropriate a sum not to exceed twenty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
For refreshments and.
Other incidentals?
Yeah, incidental expenses for the Veterans Day festivities for November ninth in association with the other four towns. I mean, I think Wellington, when, when I was there the last time, I had the impression, it was almost, it was almost potluck, like people brought everything, but I, I don't think we had to depend on that. I think it's a good idea, we'll make arrangements for finger food and refreshments if somebody wants to bring something in that can.
I agree. And we looked at it and tried to figure that through and then went, wow, that's really going to be tough.
Yeah.
Um, with four towns and. And do we want to say anything about uh, working with the treasurer to determine the line item? This to be used?
And that, that we will consult with the treasurer and the Board of Finance as to appropriate line items.
Thank you. I second that, all in favor?
I.
I, thank you very much. Heating oil, the price has been locked in at two dollars five, four, six, five per gallon for July first, two thousand twenty-five through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six.
Five, four, six, five?
Uh, five, four, six, five, yes.
That's true, twenty-six.
Uh, yes. Through June, June thirtieth to twenty-six.
Good.
There. Okay, Finance Department, invoice management. We're purchasing two scanners for about nine hundred for scanning invoices into our Infinite Visions Accounting System, which will make look up, et cetera, et cetera, much easier. The, also, just a reminder that Our Town, Our Future has our stakeholder meeting, Community Forum on Wednesday, October sixteenth from seven to nine PM at Norton Memorial Hall. And the goal of this forum is to review progress since our two thousand twenty-two meeting and to discuss fresh ideas from the community for future Ashford initiatives. That's what I have for selectmen updates.
And you said the sixteenth was the date of that, Our Town, Our Future?
Yeah, Wednesday, the sixteenth, from seven to nine at Norton.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, moving on in our agenda. Where are we here? Uh, school roof replacement.
You're, you skipped minutes.
Oh, minutes, oh, yeah. Uh, to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of September third, two thousand twenty-four.
So.
Uh, seconded, all in favor?
I.
I, motion passes, thank you. I sent out the minutes from our meeting last Thursday this afternoon. We're not ready for everybody to approve those yet because you haven't had the opportunity to read them and we would want to probably make sure that Roger was here, so just letting you know I sent them out. Uh, here for Boards, Commissions, Committees, I don't think we have anything in particular. Old Business, Ashford School Roof Replacement Project. Oops, yeah.
Catherine, just going back now, our meeting on, oh, never mind, I mean, never mind. The October third, the, the meeting, the minutes have not gone out yet or they just went out?
They went out this afternoon.
Okay.
That was last Thursday's meeting.
Yep, yep.
Special meeting. Okay, Ashford School Roof Replacement. All work except for the replacement of the thirty-foot highs, the thirty-foot skylight should be complete by October eighteenth. Walkthrough is slated for October twenty-fourth. Delivery of the skylight remains on target for early December with installation planned to coincide with the school's late December closing. Project remains on budget overall. Ashford Fire Station Roof Replacement.
Um, just going back on that for a second.
Sure.
Um. Normally you would get a, what we, when I was with the state, we call it an OM, O and M manual. Would you make a note to make sure you get that? And what that is, is, is an operation and maintenance manual and it would include all warranties and guarantees.
Got it.
Plus all, and, and this is very important, lean releases from all contractors involved in that project.
Thank you.
And.
I appreciate yours.
We would not sign off on a project with any final payments and everything till we had that in the hand and our architects had made a written recommendation for approval. That's kind of critical.
Good. Will there, there be a trick to this if, or an issue with this? If everything is done except for the, um, skylight?
Well, what I had mentioned before, and, and I understand not everybody follows the protocols that the state did, but what we would do with, like with these dates that you just gave us.
Yeah.
We would get a letter from the contractor.
Okay.
And that letter would say that in their opinion, and they could consult with the, with the architect, they are putting us on notice that the project is substantially complete. And, and, and that's, that's language that needs to be in that letter.
Got it.
Then, then it would note with the exception. And if the skylight is an exception or, or there is a minor expect, that would be explained in that letter. And then that letter normally triggers the owner, the owner's rep, the architect and the contractors to do the final walkthrough and, and come up with a punch list.
The punch list, yes. Very good, thank you.
And if, you know, if you have anything that you'd like me to take a look at or I can, I'm, I'm happy to help with that, Catherine.
Thank you, I appreciate, I appreciate your experience in this area because it's pretty invaluable. Very good, thank you. Uh, Ashford Fire Station Roof Replacement, it's been inspected and the CO is in progress, correct, everybody? Yep. Uh, Ashford website, let's see, where am I?
I, I got a question for Paul, if you don't mind. Paul, when you say complete, that includes the solar panels?
Yep, and then we're back out because they had an issue with them that's been not within, well.
I didn't, I didn't hear part of that, Paul.
It wasn't plugged in.
Yeah, it wasn't plugged in.
One of the pieces of the array wasn't plugged in. And actually, I should have put this in with my selectmen update because I see it's not on the agenda here. Um, so, uh. Um, but that's, that's a status, which is good.
Yes.
Okay, and. Uh, let's see. Uh, okay. Uh, finalized town building use fee schedule and Ashford Food Bank donation policy. I have to beg off on the written portion of this. I have established the use fee schedule, um, with the various groups that use it, usability.
I know there's a couple of loose ends, but you've been operating and everything right along anyway, basically under what we've agreed.
Thank you. Okay, review open items on the approved ARPA spending list and possible reallocation requests to be presented for approval at the upcoming informational public hearing, ARPA reallocations and authorization special town meeting. I think the wording on this is, uh, old, old. We're all old. Uh, what we did was we reviewed that list during our meeting on Thursday, last Thursday. And Chris put together the legal notice, which has been sent to the newspaper because it had, that's why, one of the reasons we had that special meeting. And if we need a change, we can make the change, but I'm kind of loathe to do that at this point. However, we do know that we have some other items that have come up that, and we also expect that we're going to have another meeting about ARPA in November, probably towards mid to late November uh, because we will only have, we have to have all of our contracts for anything that's ARPA work signed and in place by December thirty-first for all remaining ARPA work. So, um, what I know has come up, well, first of all, I think you have the list of the, you sent it electronically too. Did you get the electronic stuff or did you pick up your hard?
I, I picked up what was in my box over the weekend, but it was just an agenda. I didn't. Now, when Thursday, we went over that list that you had, but we authorized you to do some tweaking because I think it needed some adjusting.
Actually, we, what we did was we went back and we, we produced a list of all ARPA work, all what was approved, all what was, uh, is in progress, all that is, has not started. Okay, which some of it you may want, we may want to reconsider, and we sent that out electronically. Uh, Chris sent it out and then she was printing things early this morning, so we're sorry that you didn't get the printed version, but do you have the ability to pull up the list?
I didn't see anything.
Online, in your.
Special Board of Selectmen Minutes came in. Updated ARPA, I'm sorry, yep, eleven fifty-four, I didn't see that.
Can you see your, will you be able to see that, okay, pulling it up on your screen?
Let me try, it's on my phone.
Yeah, and in, oh, it's on your phone? What I may end up doing is taking that and putting it up here on screen. Just have to get the thing from.
Yeah, I checked my emails this morning, but I didn't do it later.
Uh, Chris, you sent that out as a separate item? If I recall?
Eleven fifty-four is when I got mine.
Eleven fifty-four.
It went out with the notice and the attachments to the town unit.
Okay.
Uh, didn't see that. I, I looked for attachments, Chris, when I pulled up the agenda tonight and there were no attachments for this meeting.
You're breaking up just a little bit there, just so you know. Let's just see. Minutes set up. Bear with me just a minute, I have a little trouble with my search capability here. Chris, is that the updated ARPA from the Finance Office email? It's just ARPA on that one? Or was that? Let me just check one more thing.
Forwarded, it's a forwarded email from Laura.
Oh, it's from Laura?
She sent it to me and I forwarded it to all of you.
Selectmen's Office, Catherine Silverman, hi, Bill.
Hey Catherine, you froze on me and now I'm trying to get back in and it's not letting me.
All right, well, we'll, we'll work through it here. In the meantime, I'm looking for that document.
Okay.
That might be why you froze.
What I was saying was I checked the webpage, uh, tonight before our meeting and there were no. And there were no attachment for tonight's meeting.
Okay. All right. Chris, just do me a favor and double check that it was. I've got a date of ten seven and I got a balance of. Fifty two, seven, seventy eight. I think I have it right here, Bill, to put right up on the screen. Once you're in.
And I'm gonna try again. This will be the third time. You go ahead. I'll keep trying on this.
Um. It shows you in here, but it doesn't show you. It just shows your name. Ah, I see myself again. And now I see one participant. So that's us, not you.
I'm trying to come in again.
Okay.
You just. You said that I was, you could hear me. You were, it was scratchy or something, and then your end of it just froze on me.
Oh.
I'm not sure what the hell happened.
Okay.
Should have known it was working too well. I'm getting the feedback. This site cannot be reached.
You're kidding. Um, let me do.
Legal notice and agenda. And attachments were sent at eleven thirty six.
Thank you.
The ARPA list was sent at eleven fifty four.
I think I got that one. Okay.
I got an email, but I'm staying on the.
I got that.
Webpage. It's not there. At least I couldn't get it twice the way I tried.
All right. Uh, you know what? I think we haven't been putting those attachments on the webpage, so perhaps we should go and start doing that.
It's complete. It's attached to the legal. It's gonna be on the webpage, attached to the legal notice.
But it's not out there. But it's not out there yet. Right?
Karen posted this morning.
Well, she did post it this morning. Okay.
I did not look for attachments with the legal notice. I looked for attachments for the Board of Selectment meeting.
Uh, it would be with the legal notice.
A special town meeting.
So it's under special town meetings?
Yes.
Oops. I can also pu- pull it up on the screen if you can't. If you're able to see the screen. Let's get down here.
I'm gonna shut my computer down totally then try to come back in because it's not working otherwise.
Okay. So, Chris. Did you say it was put out under town meetings? Or is this someplace like up in the?
It should be under special town meetings.
All right, so what I did was this. I'm gonna go back. I have town meetings.
That's fine. Go to that.
I did, and I didn't see it. That's June eleventh. Oh, oh, no, it's not down here either. So for two thousand twenty four.
I don't know where it is. I sent it to him this morning.
Okay.
No.
Well, what we do have, Bill, is if you are able to get back in, I can put it up on the screen.
All right. It looks like I'm maybe getting in again now.
Cool.
I shut down totally now.
This meeting is being recorded.
Okay.
All right, I'm going to get off the phone.
Okay.
Okay, so I now need to go back to Zoom.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Give me a second and I will get to. Our meeting. Why can't I get into Zoom? I'm in Zoom. I'm in Zoom, but I can't see anything. Oh, here, I see you. Uh, I don't see your face, but I do see your name. Can you see?
I see you.
Okay, good. Then I'm gonna try. There you are. Okay, so I'm gonna try a screen sharing. Give me a second. I need to. Uh, with this. Over here.
I'm sorry.
It's not on there. Can't go on the website until it appears in the paper.
That's what I was wondering.
So it'll be on the website on Thursday.
Not a problem.
I'm sorry, that's what.
So I'm gonna share. I'm gonna share the screen over here. Not a problem. Uh. And doing that, I need to go back into here. Share a screen.
As I remember when we were reviewing that list that we were looking at last Thursday morning. One of the questions that I had. And I think you want to check with with Chris Catherine was. I didn't see where we showed a credit with the patio savings at Norton Hall.
We got the answer to that. It was that we already in a previous ARPA meeting. With the town, we already addressed that.
Okay.
We already reallocated or whatever.
And then the other questions mostly you had about some odds and ends that we weren't sure the figures.
Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, good. Is it big enough? Let me.
No.
I can go a little bit. Well, tell me when it is because I think this might be good.
I can make it out, particularly if you pointed it out.
Yeah, okay. I'm gonna do one more. Just see how that works out. Catherine.
March eighteenth, we reapproved.
Yeah, March eighteenth, Phil, we.
Yeah.
We took the remaining balance, which was lovely, thirty seven thousand two hundred fifty seven from the paving project. And the uh.
Uh, put it back in the pot.
Put it back in the.
Reallocated it. Okay.
We put it back in the pot.
That was my question.
Very good. Okay. So, I gotta bring this down one notch. Okay. So here, can you see well enough? Pickleball.
Yeah, if you guide it through it, it's it's a little tough.
So what this shows is every one of the projects, every one of the things where we're using the ARPA money. And what was approved, what was spent to date, and what the balance is. Okay, so we get down. Here's our mini splits. Um, which I think. Oh, that's for Norton. We reapplied the five. Whatever it was there, five thousand or forty five hundred or whatever. Uh, and then we have our ARPA admin stuff. Text my gov. Which, by the way, we're looking at to see when we can stop using text my gov. We have to give ninety days notice. Uh, to the company because our new website, I believe, will replace that capability. So we just need to find out. The. Okay, housing seed money, town office building here. So you can see the ones that. We're talking about now. That we want to get approved. This is the ten thousand dollars. For the Ashford Memorial Park fencing to add that. That's one item on our list that's in our legal notice. And then you can see the entrance, the patio.
Can we re?
You still there? Hey there.
Yeah, it just says the meeting disconnected and that they're trying to reconnect. I don't know if it's something wrong. Zoom or whatever.
I don't think there's any, well.
It's not on this side.
I don't know. It's because Paul has it up as well.
Yeah.
It's not happening on this end, Bill.
Is Paul freezing too, though?
Nope.
No?
No, mine's working good, so.
Mine was working good.
Yeah.
One of the questions, when when this thing stopped, I was asking, I remember we were talking about Thursday, Catherine. Was you were concerned that Mike Tomatoes Group, what is it, Tyke or I don't know?
Tyke, Tyke.
Uh, was gonna be uh. Over budget and I don't think we included it in our list. Did you clarify that or have a chance to do that?
Uh, yeah, I took a look at that with um. Sherry. And if I understand correctly, we've just kind of had a running. Total running for that. Uh. And what we show here, I'm trying to find it. Is as of a particular date. So here's Tyke Zoom hosting twenty thousand. No, we don't have anything there. So we have to figure out how we want to address that. And.
Funding and do we have surplus funding in our ARPA allotments?
Yes, we do. Um, becomes a matter of. Yes, we do in our ARPA allotment. We have what fifty two thousand or so that has not been attributed to anything. That's with, that's net of the two changes we're talking about for our October meeting. Which the two were the. A sec. The two were the adding to the fencing at Memorial Park and the other one. Is the traffic logics. So even with those applied, we have fifty two thousand or so left over. But we also have fifty two seventies, fifty two thousand seven hundred seventy eight dollars. And. We also know that. Uh, the fire department has, they want to change a request that they've had and have an additional request. Uh, that we probably want, we may want to discuss tonight. It cannot make it onto the agenda for the. Town meeting we already have scheduled, but it could be brought into if we, I'm assuming we're going to have a November. Town meeting that will finalize the very end of our ARPA funding. Um, because we've, you know, got to do that. So I don't know if you want to talk about their request tonight, or if you want to read it through. Uh, but that's one that's also out there. So and we also for next year have to plan on how we're going to pay for Tyke Zoom hosting. The support that they provide to us. Uh, and that'll have to be put in our general government budget.
I did read over Paul's email to us.
Yeah.
About, and while he's there, maybe he could just give us a brief description of his thoughts on that.
Say that last part one more time.
I said I did get Paul's email to us to the board.
Oh, good.
About about his new request and adjustments. And maybe while he's there right now, he could just give us a brief explanation.
Perfect. Paul, go for it.
Sure. Well, we, the fire department or the fire, yeah, I guess I did. The fire department applied for an AFG grant to replace our current SCOTPACs. Um, and it was denied for this fiscal year. Um, we had two that we had to take out of service because they're aging and as they age. Um. The electronics in them are no longer supported. So once the electronics go and they can't be repaired, they are no longer usable. By both NIOSH and OSHA and NFPA standard. So that's just a liability we can't afford to have. So they're taken out of service. Um, so. Um, what I want to do is start slowly replacing them with funding that we have available. And then each year I'll just keep reapplying for that AFG grant to replace them. Um, a lot of the stuff hinges on the new NFPA standard that's due out. Maybe by the end of this year. They're not sure when they're gonna get that. If anybody's paid attention to the. OSHA thing that's going on with NFPA and OSHA, it's a. It generated a lot of publicity, not good publicity, because it would be very, very expensive for towns like Ashford. Um, so there was a lot of pushback. So there's a lot of rewriting going on. Um, but the the bottom line is. Um, we have to keep, we have to start replacing them. Um, and this is a good way to do it instead of doing, I mean, I think the AFG grant was two hundred and seventy six thousand dollars total. For all the packs. So if we do two at a time, um. Thank you, Chris. Um, the two at a time, it's twenty one thousand or just just under twenty one thousand or just over twenty one thousand. For those two. And then I included. In that request to replace twelve masks instead of just the two that would come with the air, the new air packs. The new masks are an upgrade. They have a different heat shield on them, and that's a safety thing, obviously. Um, so that would replace most of my interior people. We assign masks for health reasons. Um, so that would replace most of my interior people's masks, the active, the more active interior people and all the paid staff.
Have you? Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's good. And then the RIT pack. Um, RIT stands for Rapid Intervention Team. We have never had one in this department, and I think that it's a necessity. Um, that's a firefighter or first responder rescue pack that if something happened in an event and some firefighter went down. It's a smaller version of the bigger air packs that's more portable so that it goes in with a team to to rescue and remove. Um, a down firefighter or personnel. And we always say firefighter, but it could also be, you know, in a. A hazmat situation or a chemical spill or something. You just never know, so.
Is there a time constraint on this? Is there a? Um, like you need them by a certain date?
Well, when that new NFPA standard is written and comes out. That will be the the fourth change to our air pack certifications, and they will no longer be, once they, if they go out for service, they will not be serviced.
Is this something that we would consider as a capital?
We could eventually, but I I I mean, honestly, I would, we replaced, I didn't. Previous administration replaced all the bottles because they didn't foresee the pack portion being. I don't want to call it integrated because it's not. Um, it's just, it's just. The technology has advanced faster than than we think. And there was some issue, well. Every time something happens, right? When when there's a firefighter injury or death, there's a huge investigation. Um, and a lot of the things that are changed revolve around that. So there were some incidents that that resulted in some change. The mask are a very big example of that. Um, so. I mean, is it something we need to do right away? No, but if we start doing it, that's what I said, if we do two at a time. Until we either get that grant funding or we bring it down to a capital cost that's reasonable. Um, I just think two hundred and seventy six thousand dollars in one hit is enormous.
Well, one of the, one of the things about ARPA. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, is that when you go to. When you're putting something in for ARPA, it's supposed to be the whole thing, not part of it. Okay, it's not like you can use ARPA money for one part of it and then supplement. Um, supplement with other monies. It's supposed to be the whole item. Uh, but I don't know how that would apply with masks and, you know, getting two and then getting the rest. As part of it, basically an initiative.
Right.
So I can see Chris's brain whirling there. Well, yeah. I don't know if you heard that, Bill. It was huh?
I did.
Um. That would be.
Haven't we bought some other equipment? Uh, through ARPA over the past couple of years where we kind of piecemealed it, Paul?
We did. I was just gonna say that, but I I don't want to get myself.
Well, you did one bunch of something one time.
Purchased the cabin chassis for the new service truck.
Right?
The defense.
And 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 the department is paying for the rest of that service truck. Like, we took funds out of our funding to finish that truck. It's not even online yet because we haven't finished it yet.
So we used ARPA funds for a piece?
Fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
I mean, if somebody wants to give me the money back, I'd be happy to take it. Um, but.
Okay.
In this case, I mean, I, you could say, I I I could say that. Those those air packs could be applied to that service truck. I mean, one of them is gonna actually end up on that truck. Um, but I don't know. That, yeah, I don't know how that works.
All right, well. All right. Well, um,
And we did the same thing. You're right, Chris, the DEFIPs because the town ended up purchasing only two for the fire department because another
We did two for the first.
We had four for the town, right?
And the rest.
The rest from the hole in the wall. Right. So that was a partial thing too. I mean, if you look at it though, we're not buying part of a pack. We're buying the entire pack. We're buying new masks. I mean, I could just give you a thing for, I want, I think it's 18 masks. I mean,
Yeah.
Um, it's just I went through and looked at how many of the masks we have that are in better shape than others and also how often the people that have those are, are using that.
So what I'm thinking is, is that, um, we got another two weeks till our next meeting. That we look at this and see if it needs to be recast in a certain way to make sure that it's very clear is for two masks or whatever, you know, whatever. Um, and that is what the request is for. The rest of it is, I don't want to say irrelevant, but it's not what we could use.
Email so that it says it's for 12 masks, two air packs.
Yeah.
And the RIT pack because those are all independent units and not reference the, the grant. That's what.
So that's a consideration. Bill, what do you think?
Well, the list that you've got on, on, on the screen right now.
Yeah.
That's already been submitted with the, the, the meeting.
Yeah, the two items are, the two items are the yellow ones. Traffic logics and the uh, expanding the fencing at Ashford Memorial Park. And then if I take you down and close your eyes because I don't want to throw anybody into a seizure here. If you go all the way down to the bottom with those two in there, um, the unallocated balance is the 52,778. Another thing for us to consider is we have a number of items on here that are approved, 108,500 that are approved, but they're not contracted yet. And bottom line is we need to have things contracted by the end of the year for ARPA. I mean, literally signed contracts. So looking at those, I'm going to take us back up and go slowly down again. Those would be ones, what, Chris, that have project balances like AVFT bunker gear number 33, $40,000 that we haven't used yet.
And we actually, the, the guy is coming on the 15th to do the fittings so that we can sign the contract.
That'll be good. Okay. And it's still.
I didn't, I couldn't hear what Paul said on that.
A guy's coming on the 15th and so they can sign the contract.
A vendor's coming on the 15th, Bill, to do the measurements so we can get the, get the correct measurements and put the order in place and sign the contract.
Okay. So that, that signing of that contract is imminent.
Yes, I told them we had to be done with it by the end of October regardless. But I would find another vendor.
And when, and when we look at this AMP fencing, it's really these two, we're adding the 10,000 to this. So that 8,500 hadn't been spent yet, but it's certainly been allocated and reflected in the remaining balance. So if we get down to here and we go Route 44 crosswalk, that's 20,000. At this point in time, I am assuming uh, that is for, it's not for the signage, it's for something else because the signage is down.
No, that, that, that's, that was a figure that we pulled out. And I don't believe we got formal estimates on any of that stuff, but it was an amount allocated hopefully that we could either replay, repair or replace the existing crosswalk system there.
Right. So that would be before it had lights and before they were plowed up or whatever. And those other flashing lights that are ones before you get to the, to that crosswalk and another ones down the road. It's what they go on when the button's been pushed. Okay. So we haven't found anybody to do that yet.
Correct.
Yeah. Um, so we know.
That was just a figure that we kind of pulled out based on, I think the last repair we did. Chris would probably have that figured more than I would, but it was 14 or $15,000. I don't remember if that was Mike or Ralph that did that. And that didn't last us over a winter.
All right. Um, okay. And another one is the electric car charging station. And we haven't had the opportunity to uh, look and see if there's any other funding available, grant funding.
As much as, as much as that's in the air, up in the air right now and a number of different things. I understand it was nightmares down in Florida with the uh, EVs affected by saltwater that they had fires all over the state from the batteries. But anyway, I, I would be comfortable to pull that off on an intra, uh, holding pattern if we needed money in some other area.
Yeah. So I think what we're going to need to do over the next two weeks is look at these again. Uh, two to three weeks. I'll look at these again and go, okay, which ones do we think we are not going to have a signed contract by the end of the year? And, uh, and then we have to take that to the public to say, okay, you approve this, but this is where we are and this is what we think it should be allocated to instead. That'll be our, our last hurrah.
Well, I, I, I'm certainly going to support protecting our firemen with, with new equipment that they need as compared to a, uh, an EV charging system that I never see anybody using anywhere I see them, other short letter of Buckland, but.
Understood. All right. So that's going to bring our, you know, um, let's not, in terms of what's been requested in addition by the fire department. That's not going to um, impact what we're doing for our October 19th meeting. Because we only have the two items on there. Um,
Okay. And, and so we're not addressing Mike D'Amato's contract with, with his company?
No, I would, I would wait, to tell you the truth, Bill, I would wait and do that in our next round, our last round with this. Once we go, you know what? Our recommendation is to take off, say, the electric uh, vehicle charging thing.
Yeah.
And give me a little opportunity. Um, I know you can appreciate it. We're all running at a fast pace here.
If you go further down the list, the 20,000 for crosswalk signage?
Yep. Well, the 20, the 20,000, there's two things here. There is 20,000 for the crosswalk signage. And there is, where was that other 20,000 for the Route 44 crosswalk? So the crosswalk signage we're talking about here is one that is basically a good sign that says here's, here's Pompehalo Park, Trumpco Lane, Senior Housing. Uh, and I'm, I'm sorry, whatever we call, we'll call senior housing and the senior center. So that people will know they're actually back in there and that could go up there because we have two of these. We have number 45 crosswalk signage and we have, let me take us up here, Route 44 crosswalk at 20,000. So one was fixing.
I don't remember how that, why that would be duplicated there.
Yeah, I don't think it's a true duplication. I think one is the crosswalk repair itself. And then the other, the crosswalk lighting, et cetera. And then the other one is what do you want where the crosswalk is? At that point. So we didn't have anything that we could find that was like a true write-up. So I kind of made an assumption that we need signage there, but we need signage that's saying, hey, there's a road here. And this is what's down that road. What do you?
We'll have to get that clear. I, that's about as clear as mud to me, Catherine, to be honest with you.
Sorry.
Well, we'll have to get that cleared.
Okay. So that's good. That's one for us to talk through and figure out what it is.
Yeah.
Okay. And what we want in the end.
I mean, what we want is we want, we want a safety crosswalk there. The pedestrians can push a button to, to initiate it. They will have flashing lights like they do on, on on 32 in Wellington near the school and the churches up there. That tell people there's a stop coming up and people crossing. But I, I don't.
That's what I, that's what I looked at. That's what I saw when I was looking at number 36.
Okay.
And then we've got number 45 that says crosswalk signage.
Yeah, I don't, I.
So I think that's just what, those are, those are just two that we need to get cleared up and make sure that it's pretty, you know, we know what they are. And if we think that money should be used differently, then we can decide that.
So if I hear you right, the, 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 the list that you've got here, you've worked with Chris.
And Sherry, Sherry has been working with Chris as well.
And Laura.
Oh, that's good.
And Laura, and Laura.
Good. So this is the list that we'll be presenting on the 19th. And that will, with this list as it is, we will be left a balance of approximately $57,000.
Yeah. And actually, this would not be the list that's presented. The items that are here that are yellow are what are being presented.
Okay.
And then we, as a Board of Selectmen, will come back after that meeting. Or, you know, we'll come back and we'll look at what's all the rest of this and make our recommending, come up with our recommendations for the next town meeting to finalize how we're using the rest of our, our money.
Okay. And, and what we'll be considering that we know of right now, there may be something else coming up. Removing a couple of items that we've already appropriated funds for.
Right.
But we're kind of skeptical. We'll take a look at the fire department's request. And then the Mike D'Amato contract. And
Very good.
Be in the interim. We'll look at that then. Do you need a motion to go forward with this or are you all set?
Um, Chris, do we need a motion to say that? Um, I think we had already approved.
There's nothing that's factual off the finance.
So with this, there's nothing that we as a Board of Selectmen need to approve. We'd already decided what was going to be on the list before.
If I remember our meeting Thursday, we approved the list, but authorized you to do the required tweaking with some figures that we weren't quite sure of.
And because of how the, and because of how the list is presented, everything, there's nothing I needed to tweak.
Okay, good.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Let's see here. Um, review agenda for informational. Okay. That's what we did was we reviewed it. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, we reviewed this before. These are the items for the agenda.
Yeah, we, we went over that Thursday.
Yeah. And then under new business, board and commission appointments. We don't have, you know, we know through all these, but we don't have anybody to fill these appointments unless, Bill, you've heard of someone.
Um, I've got several questions out to people who have expressed a potential interest, but I don't have anybody right now to give you.
All right. And then our next item under new businesses, tax refunds. So Chris, we got some refunds that I think you sent out.
Seven refunds.
Seven refunds. Bill, can you hear?
Too many.
Refunds are good, I'll take them.
They're all citing Connecticut General Statute 12 dash 129. Um, Henskey leasing rental for $728.02. Lisa and Steven Ackerman, $113.29. Benjamin Rowley, $32.88. Toyota Lease Trust, 38559. Ally Financial for Vault, Vault Trust, 34177. And VW Credit Leasing for $1,057.87.
So moved.
Seconded. Uh, all in favor? Any more discussion? Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Thank you. Uh, approve, next item C, approve AVFD annual tax abatement recommendations. Bill, do you have that in front of you?
No, I haven't seen it, but I'll, I'll go as long as you're comfortable with. I'll make the motion.
Uh, I'm comfortable as well. I'll second that. All in favor?
Uh, with many thanks to the department, I'll uh, vote yes.
As do I. Motion approved. Thank you. Now, let's see, the next one. Approve resolution authorizing first selectmen to execute and deliver any and all documents of the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security. If I understand correctly, we do this every year. Does that?
So moved.
Oh.
Yes.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, Bill. And I for me, motion approved. Uh, approved cemetery deeds as provided by town clerk. Well, we have two.
I have four.
Four.
No, I'm sorry. Three.
So moved. Are they, are they all from local?
I'm sorry?
Are they all local requests? Can you tell?
They're all in Woodard Cemetery.
Do they have different names? Is it like the same family asking? They're all in Woodard.
One is from Danielson, one is from Eastford, and one is from Ashford.
One from Ashford, one from Eastford. What was the first one?
Danielson.
Danielson. Okay. Thank you. You could hear that better than I could. Very well. All right.
We ever, while we're talking about it, did, did we ever look at? I know we had talked about over a year ago.
Yep.
Coming up with some sort of a policy. Didn't we have somebody come in and buy a whole group of them, 12 units?
Yes. And actually, I was going to mention, I was actually going to mention this. That was, that's our cemetery committee of which I am a member. And we need to go back to that and gather.
Well, in spare time.
Yes, thank you. During my sleep time. But yes, I, and as we were talking about this, I was remembering that we need to make sure we get that done so that we don't have that same situation we had with someone kind of coming in and buying a whole lot of them who wasn't even from town.
It was like 12 plots, wasn't it?
I thought it was, I thought it was 30, but that's.
Was it 30?
How many plots was it when that, um, someone came in to buy a lot of plots?
Confered or buttoned them?
Yeah. They wanted their whole family buried here, even though they didn't live here. Um, yes. So Bill, yeah, I'm making a note that we have to go back to that.
Okay.
Can he come in tomorrow morning, please, and sign?
Can you come in tomorrow morning and sign them? Sign?
Yes. Yeah, just leave it in my box.
All right. Because one of them has to be used immediately.
Ah, oh, he said just put them in his box. Okay. Agenda items for upcoming Board of Selectment meetings. Well, one, we're going to revisit um, ARPA. Um, that's one. Anything else in particular?
No, other than I, you know, going through this last issue with the citizen and that, I noticed that one of our uh, businesses in town just celebrated their 50th anniversary.
Yeah.
Uh, Briar League Campground.
Uh huh.
And I was thinking it might be nice if the Board of Selectmen kind of sent the letter, congratulations, or I mean, I understand they've got national acclaim, a number of years running, uh, this sort of operation there and it would be nice, I think, if we could acknowledge something like that. I don't know if you want to put it on our next agenda or you and I can do that, Catherine? Tonight's meeting.
Yeah. Um, yes, we can do that. If you have any key points that you'd like to see in that letter, why don't you send them to me so that I can get something crafted?
Well, if you look at the article that's in the citizen, they kind of have more key points than, than I've had. I, I mean, I, I knew Addie and Ed Bryant's parents for a number of years and they were always both very active in town affairs and everything. And I know that, you know, there's, you could like the flagpole at the, the Concebo. And I know that, you know, there's, you could, like the flagpole at the, the Concebo. Uh, Ed Spiezowski donated that and the flag and, you know, a number of, they've been active as long, as well as being a, uh, um, taxpayer in town, they've been very active and it's nice to see a business thriving the way theirs are. And it, I just think it'd be nice if we acknowledged that.
I agree, I agree. Okay, so we'll get something, we'll work and get something crafted for that.
Uh, even if it was a proclamation or something like that, but.
Oh. Yep. Okay.
Other than that, I've got eight 12.
Motion to adjourn from you, second from me. Aye, eight 12. Thank you very much. Take care.
Thank you, and I'll stop in, in the morning and, uh, sign that.
Sounds good.
And if there's any other stuff like the list or whatever, if it's not already in my box, if that could be in there, that'd be great.
Okay, though, thanks.
Have a good night, folks. Thank you.
You too.
All right, Bill.
Mike.
Oh crap, I hope I saved that other thing. Yeah. I just need to get out of the meeting.